This is the Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. It is 2:01 PM. I am Carolina Mejia. I am the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Mincer. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Today Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell is joining us as well as Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. We have a full boardroom today and it brings me such joy to see so many little faces here today. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Vice Chair Mincer.
Could I ask Tom Water City Councilmember Charlie Schneider to lead us? Alright. allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vice Chair Mincer, would you like to do a land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We would also like to start today's meeting with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge the indigenous Salish peoples who have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawks and Island, the Squawly and Chehalis people, our sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Thank you. Now, the approval of the Tuesday, April 19th agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the proposed agenda for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Mincer.
Aye.
Commissioner Mejia.
Aye. Motion passes. Next is the approval of the Board Meeting Minutes.
I move to approve Board Meeting Minutes from April 12th, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Mincer.
Aye.
Commissioner Mejia.
Aye. Motion passes. We have two presentations today. The first one is the Proclamation of Earth Day. Assistant County Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, Thurston County. And today, I am pleased to introduce the proclamation to celebrate Earth Day. Earth Day began in 1970 as a way to bring awareness to the need for us to protect the planet that we call our home for ourselves and for the generations to come. And we are very fortunate today to be joined by Ralph Monroe and Bob Barnes, and I'm going to invite them to please come up to the stand and introduce the people that you have brought with you today. Thank you.
Well, Madam Chair and members of the Commission, our third partner and founder, Dave Pierceall, couldn't be with us today, but he was a little bit under the weather. But I want to say thank you for this opportunity and also to tell you that this is our 30th year. We were celebrating 30 years of involvement on the McLean Parkway and around McLean Elementary School. And if it wasn't for Thurston County, this wouldn't be possible. And I always point out that your road crew or the road department, I'm not sure if that's the right name for it anymore, but they have just been a phenomenal help to us. And they've supported us all the way along, and this was the property that they had acquired that we're normally working on because it wasn't used for a wider access into the Evergreen State College. And I think Commissioner Edwards was the only one that was here maybe when we got started or.
Way back.
Was involved. It's been a long time. And we've had thousands of kids and thousands of people involved over the years, and that's not an exaggeration. There have been thousands. And so we've got youngsters here from, I'll introduce the McLean kids, and then Bob Barnes is working with Marshall Middle School. And Bob, you want to make some comments too?
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much for receiving us today. This is an exciting day for Thurston County. Thurston County Public Works has been incredible at supporting what we're doing. Also Thurston County Parks, both of them have really stepped up to the plate. And you're going to be pretty amazed at what these students have accomplished and are willing to even do more. They are really exemplary, you're going to see by their presentation today. It's pretty exciting to look at the future and see that this world's going to be a better place because of them. So, anyway.
And I want to point out that without Bob's help, we couldn't do this and without the help of so many young people. And we've got kids we started with that are now bringing their own kids to come and help us. So it's been really fun to see, but we'll start with the three youngsters from McLean. You want to come up, who's first, second, and third?
They'll introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Siona Congra from Miss Walker's 5th grade class at McLean Elementary School. We are all part of the McLean Student Leadership Team. We are very proud of the trails near our school. Over the past years, we have put up many birdhouses along McLean School Trail and the Ralph Monroe Trail. This year, some Audubon volunteers cleaned out all our birdhouses to get them ready for new swallow families. We know that swallows eat lots of mosquitoes, and that is a good thing.
Hello, my name is Angelica Di Benedetto Campos from Mrs. Mayavos 5th grade class. This year, we planted nearly 5,000 daffodil bulbs along the Evergreen Parkway and Delphi Road. We were all excited to see when the first daffodil would bloom. They are very beautiful right now. Our neighbors who walk on the Ralph Monroe Trail and the McLean School Trail donated all the money for us to buy the bulbs this year. We want to thank everyone who helped.
Hello, my name is Jax Clark, and I am also in Mrs. Mayavos 5th grade class. We all want to live in the cleanest and nicest neighborhood in America. This year, our student leadership team enjoyed partnering, working with Marshall Middle School to keep the trail looking nice. Hopefully our work will keep the McLean area a place of pride. Thank you to Thurston County for making these opportunities available to us. Our school mascot is the owl. We are trying to follow owl traditions and make wise choices for our environment.
Okay, and I think these three youngsters have a present for you before we start with the Marshall kids, so just be one second.
Thank you very much. That was very good.
Alright, thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce two teachers from Marshall Middle School, Tom Condon and Matthew Felipe. They're with the Citizen Science Institute program, which is really an exemplary magnet program that includes folks from all over, students from the feeder schools that feed into Marshall. And they have been involved in restoration, and they'll tell you their story. But it's pretty exciting to see the future of these kids is very bright, and they're going to be the future leaders. You'll see that. So, Tom and Matthew, you want to come up? Come on up. These guys are great. Without teachers like this to inspire, it wouldn't happen.
The Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to have our students come speak to you today. Truly, I would like to just step back and let our students come up and present and show the good work that they've been up to, but thanks again for the opportunity. Have a good day.
What he said.
Okay, so we have a presentation for you. I'm not sure if it can get pulled up yet, but we're here to talk to you about all the different things that CSI does. So throughout the presentation, we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Haley, I'm in 8th grade, and I've been in CSI for three years. And here's our presentation. Today, we're going to talk to you about water quality testing, our CSI restoration efforts, our outdoor classroom, our school-wide day of service, our native plant nursery, and then our ASB officials will give you a report. Here's Ian talking about water quality.
I'm Ian. I'm a 7th grader at Thurgood Marshall Middle School, and I've been in CSI for two years. So water quality testing is a way that we measure the health of a specific body of water. We test twice a year at the Deschutes River. We've been testing for seven years, and over those years, we've found some trends in the water quality, which are high nitrates and high fecal coliform and temperature levels, mostly in fall. On the screen is the rest of the data, and as you can see, for example, with the dissolved oxygen, we have been meeting our standards over the time. And next, we'll have Jonah talking about the future of the Capital Lake.
As you may know, Capital Lake is connected to the Deschutes River. We take our tests mostly near the mouth. Capital Lake connects into Puget Sound. If we do restore Capital Lake, it can help with lots of different things. For example, at the moment, we have invasive zebra snails. If we were to restore this to an estuary, it'd be essential in taking away this invasive species. Capital Lake also, it doesn't stop salmon migration, but it makes it a lot harder with fish ladders that allow seals to target them below the ladder before they climb up. Also, if we restore a Capital Lake, it can become what is known as a carbon sink, and it can sequester carbon into its mud, and that can help our fight against climate change. Next, we have Haley again.
I'm going to be talking to you about CSI's restoration efforts. We've been working at four main sites. The first site I'm going to tell you about is Grass Lake. We've been working at Grass Lake for three years in partnership with the city of Olympia. So far this year, we planted about 250 native plants there. The biggest problem with the site is that we don't have safe or easy access to it. So we're in full support of putting in a trail that would give over 800 students access to this outdoor learning environment. The next site I'm going to talk to you about is West Bay Woods. West Bay Woods is also close to our school, is across from the Port of Olympia. This site is only partially open. So far this year, we planted about 500 native plants there. Three-fourths of these plants actually came from our nursery at school, so we got to grow them. These plants help to reduce, okay, they help to sequester carbon, they help to absorb stormwater runoff, and they help to reduce erosion, sorry. The next place I'm going to talk to you about is the Ralph Monroe Trails. Ralph Monroe Trails. So far this year, we planted about 250 native plants there, and we've also been planting some coastal redwoods. The coastal redwoods aren't native here, but with the warming climate, they're well adapted to thrive here. The last site I'm going to talk to you about is actually on campus. There's this hillside that's covered in scotch room, and the plan is to get a big piece of equipment so that we can take out the scotch room and then plant some coastal redwoods here. They'll help to reduce erosion and sequester carbon. Next, Lucy and Demary are going to talk to you about our cultural classroom.
Hi, I'm Demary. I'm a current 8th grader in CSI, and I serve as our communications officer.
Hi, I'm Lucy, and I'm in 6th grade, and I've been in CSI for one year. A cultural ecosystem is a place where people work together with the land to increase the diversity and abundance of plants and animals. Unlike European-style farming with monocrops, native people practice reciprocity by receiving the gifts of the land and in turn giving back in ways that care for the animals and plants already there. At Thurgood Marshall, we're going to have three cultural ecosystems, including a native berry garden, a micro prairie, and a food forest.
We will also have a Stonehenge area where kids and teachers alike can gather and socialize. The Stonehenge will remind us of our place in the world and our connections with the seasons, and will be built in line with the equinox. We will also be growing the three sisters, cabbages, beans, and squash. They are planted together, working together to improve soil health and in turn producing more themselves. Next, we have Jade talking about day of service.
Okay.
We're having some technical difficulties with the Zoom, so we should go ahead and continue your presentation.
So every year, our school participates in a day of service on our Martin Luther King Jr. and his belief that anybody can be great because anybody can serve. Students from CSI act as ambassadors to each advisor class throughout our school. This year, we had 450 students serve at 17 different sites. We go to different places in our community, and we do things like plant native plants, remove invasive species, we do tram maintenance, and we also help to elementary schools. And next, we have Eliza, Tess, and Clara, and they're going to talk to you about our native plant nursery.
Hi, I'm Eliza. I'm in 6th grade, and this is my first year in CSI.
I'm Tess. I'm in 7th grade, and this is my second year in CSI.
Hi, I'm Clara. I'm in 6th grade, and this is my first year in CSI.
Our topic is the native plant nursery. We started the garden about seven years ago and recently extended it for more room to plant. Our goal in the nursery is to have people learn more about native plants. A benefit of having native plants is that they're adapted to our climate, so they don't need to be watered as much, which helped us reduce our environmental impact.
We grow at least 30 different kinds of plants in our garden, like the Western red cedar, common snowberry, and fireweed, or many more. We are going to be starting a salad bar in our garden, or in our school cafeteria that will be supplied by our garden. We also recently built a Willow structure on our whole school day of service. It's a place to do classwork, hang out with friends, or just read.
The people that buy our plants are the public and our community partners, like Oli Ecosystems, Grass Lake, and the city of Olympia. Each year, we have two plant sales, one in the winter and one in the spring. The spring one is also for Mother's Day. Next up, we have Clementine introducing the leaders of the Horticulture Club.
Hi, I'm Clementine. I'm in 7th grade. This is my second year in CSI, and I currently serve as the president. So as an ASB, we have five officers, the president, which is me, the vice president, which is Torin, the secretary, which is Mia, the treasurer, which is Will, and the communications officer, which is Demary. We meet every Wednesday during 4th period to discuss fundraisers, field trips, the native plant nursery, and more. Our mission is to make CSI and the Horticulture Club more organized and productive, as well as to promote environmental stewardship and literacy throughout our school's community. Next, we have Will, who will give you the treasurer's report.
Hello, my name is Will. I'm the treasurer, and this is my second year in CSI. I'm a 7th grader, and our ASB has raised over $2,500 throughout the years from our fundraisers, which we use to spend on native plants for our garden, as well as the outdoor classroom that we are building, and what Torin is about to talk to you about.
Hello, my name is Torin Biswas. I'm the vice president of the CSI and Horticulture ASB. I'm in 7th grade, and this is my second year in CSI. Today, I'll be talking about what we will be doing with our proceeds, and as an organization, we recognize the need of our community. Therefore, we will be donating to them by splitting our charity fund, donating to these following charities. Number one, we have Oli Ecosystems, whose goal is protecting, preserving, and restoring urban ecosystems in Olympia, Washington. Number two, we have the Food Bank, which is a very important resource to many people in many financial situations. Especially in these past few years, due to the pandemic, many people have been put in certain situations, and this is a very good resource for them. Number three is the Safe Place. This is a place devoted to providing a safe place for women and children from domestic violence cases, located downtown and open 24/7. Finally, number four, we have the Sierra Club, which is a worldwide protector of natural areas. By donating to these places, we hope to make our community and the world the best place that it can be. Next up, we have Mia.
My name is Mia Kung, and I am the secretary of the Horticulture Club. And recently, we have received a $25,000 environmental literacy grant that will allow us to buy Stonehenge and five metal picnic tables that will serve as a gathering place for students and teachers. We will also be spending some of our grant money on professional development with Grubbs' New Curriculum, 10 Gather and Grow, for 10 new staff members. We want all the students here at Thurgood Marshall Middle School to be able to participate in outdoor education, and we need teachers that will be able to support that. One more thing we want to spend our grant money on is removing Scotch brooms and replacing them with coastal redwoods to better filter stormwater runoff and sequester carbon. Next, we have Demary.
Finishing up, we want to give a big thank you to Bob Barnes, our Amercor volunteer Caroline Slagle, Stephanie Bishop from South Sound Green, parent volunteers, the city of Olympia, Daniel Einstein from Olympia Oli Ecosystems, and Ralph Monroe.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Questions, comments, Commissioners?
Where'd Will go? Hey, Will, come up here just a minute, will you? I do want to say something. Oftentimes, I'll mention that kids, young people, are 30% of our population, but they're 100% of our future. And you can't help but think our future's looking pretty good when you've got young people like this that are dedicated and participating actively in, well, today it's the Earth Day, but I bet they're active in a lot of different things. And this wasn't orchestrated, but being as you're the treasurer, I want to give you $100 to put in your pot to help you young people with this cause. Okay? So thank you very much, and I can't tell you how proud I am of all these young people. So thank you.
Alright, well, thank everyone for being here. This is a super exciting proclamation for me on multiple levels. One is just because I see friends and neighbors out in the crowd. My daughter is at Marshall Middle School. I see her teammates, Clementine, my neighbor Mia, Charlie, you know, Martin McCallum, Daniel Einstein, people I know, Tom, and I mean, it's great to just see my neighbors because I live in your neighborhood. I've been out planting with Ralph and Bob. I think I missed the daffodils, but I did coastal redwoods, and we did oaks over at McLean, and those are awesome projects, and it's great to see the kids come in here and explain it to my seatmates and everybody in Thurston County. I drive by the daffodils every day, usually four or five times because that's my route home. And my kids talk about it, so we really know, everyone in the community notices that work and how awesome. Somebody said they want their community to look the best and be the best, and that's how you do it. So thank you. But on a higher level, on a policy level, these issues that you guys are working on are directly related to what I do every day as county commissioner. I serve, I have the honor to serve this commission on the Climate Action Steering Committee, on the Salmon Recovery Council for all of South Sound, and Chehalis Basin Partnership, where we work on watershed health in the Chehalis Basin. And all of these roles, we're working on all the stuff that you guys are working on and learning about, water quality testing, habitat restoration. These things are, if you're interested in this stuff, then keep your eyes up here and help us with what we do, you know, let us know what you're working on, because this is the information we need. Climate in particular, this commission and your entire county, and I mean the cities as well as Thurston County, is working on a climate mitigation plan. At one of the rallies I went to recently, they were like, only one action's been completed. And that's true because a lot of the actions are ongoing. They're not going to be completed. It's work we have to keep doing. 70% of the actions in our plan are underway, and we have a lot of work to do, but we're committed to it, and we're getting going on it. So thank you for being here and helping us with all of this, and I'm very, very excited about this. Thank you.
Well, I say thank you very much, and we hope that 30 years from now, there's another group here that carries this work on, and I'm sure that's true. I do want to say, as a longtime public official, I'll bet you three wish that every group that comes before you were this organized and this quick. With that, we say thank you very much.
And I guess I'll end it by just saying thank you as well. I want to thank the students, the teachers, the parents, the community organizers, and the leaders who joined us here today. I can honestly say I admire the impact that you are creating, not only through your own circles, but in the community as well, through all of this organization. I admire your service, your passion, and your leadership, and I can't wait to see some of you as my future elected officials sitting up here. So thank you again for coming. With that, Vice Chair, for publication.
Okay, here we go. Thurston County Proclamation, Earth Day. Whereas April 22nd, 2022 provides an opportunity to increase community awareness and appreciation of the earth's natural environment, and whereas this year's theme, Invest in Our Planet, focuses on building a prosperous and equitable future, building healthy communities and economies, and using our voices through civic and personal interactions. And whereas Thurston County strives to provide regional leadership to enhance environmental sustainability for its citizens and for our future generations. And whereas climate change is already affecting our communities, impacts like hotter summers, wildfire smoke, and flooding endanger our homes and affect public health and local business. And whereas Thurston County has signed onto the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, a regional agreement to significantly reduce climate polluting greenhouse gas.
agreement to significantly reduce climate polluting greenhouse gases while maintaining and even improving our quality of life. And whereas the McLean Schoolchildren and their community have completed many projects in the Delphi area, including the planting of native trees, daffodil bulbs, maintenance of the McLean School Trail System, and Evergreen Parkway, and participation in Earth Day plantings at the McLean School Forest. And whereas more than five decades after the first Earth Day, millions of people have answered the call to protect the environment, today let us do so again by joining, raising our voices, and standing up for our planet and our future. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims April 22nd, 2022 as Earth Day in Thurston County, and encourages all residents to be a part of this important movement and help write many more victories and successes into our history. Adopted this 19th day of, of April 2022 by the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Photo? Yeah?
Um, can we take a picture? Is, is that okay?
Yeah. Some screen, screen team members or something, huh? Thanks, Bob.
Okay. With that, we will move on to our next presentation, and it's the recognition for Bicycle Commuter Challenge Month. And Chris Hawkins is here.
Tough act to follow, Chris.
Oh, that is. Thank you, commissioners. Chris Hawkins, Program Manager with Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, and I'm here to represent the next proclamation you have, which is to recognize Bicycle Community Challenge Month, Bike Month nationally. Um, and I'm joined by a couple of people who I think are here remotely. Duncan Green, the InterCity Transit Bicycle Community Challenge Coordinator, and I think Duncan's going to address you on some of the points that you'll see in this proclamation, um, but just wanted to say that this has been a great event for several decades now. I think it's up to year number 35 for the Bicycle Commuter Contest. And, um, and so that's a great track record of a lot of community participation in a, an activity that helps not only our health and our environment, but is also a, a great thing for employee wellness and, uh, and for overall community benefits that Duncan will say some more things about, and this year's theme of Take Your Vitamin B for Bike. Take it away, Duncan.
Thanks for that excellent introduction, Chris. Um, yeah, and for the record, my name is Duncan Green, representing InterCity Transit and the Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge. Thank you, commissioners, for proclaiming May as Bicycle Month in Thurston County. And, uh, as Chris mentioned, the biggest news from here is that the BCC is now the Bicycle Community Challenge, and all rides count. And, uh, I'm here to explain. And we are in our 35th consecutive year. Uh, Bicycle Community Challenge is the longest running bike challenge in our whole region, if not the US, I don't know. Um, and for three and a half decades, the BCC has been encouraging people to use a bicycle for some of their transportation needs instead of driving. And, uh, many things have changed in that time. Our local bicycling infrastructure has improved vastly. The number of people riding bikes for all reasons has been on the rise, and, uh, the way bicycle advocates think about promoting cycling has also evolved. Uh, and as well, the pandemic has brought public health into focus, and bicycling can be an important contributor to public health. Building strong communities is also increasingly important with the many challenges that face us at the local level these days. And, uh, these are some of the reasons that we believe that the more people that ride bikes in our community, the better it is for everyone, and no matter what their reason is for riding their bike. Um, we hope that recreational riding can open the door for some people to try riding for transportation, too. Um, bicycling for health and fun is beneficial to, uh, individual and community health and well-being, and we need those benefits now more than ever. Um, this year's theme, as Chris said, is Take Your Vitamin B or Vitamin Bike, uh, to bring health to the forefront along with all the other benefits of riding a bike. Most of our previous sponsors are back on board after a little bit of a hiatus, uh, along with a few new ones. So we have lots of great prizes, and the BCC coupons are back, too. Uh, we have an amazing grand prize, which is a Dream Bike Vacation with Adventure Cycling. Uh, we have, it's, uh, some of our events coming back, including the Earth Day Market Ride, which is this Saturday. Um, uh, go on our website to find out more. Um, and we, let's see, where am I? Uh, Take Your Vitamin Bike and Ride in the Bicycle Community Challenge in May to celebrate our 35th year of promoting bicycling in Thurston County. Uh, it's easy to participate as an individual or as a member of a team. Just go to bcc.intercitytransit.com to sign up or log into your existing account. Uh, feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions at any time. My email is dgreen@intercitytransit.com. And I'm also happy to answer any questions that you commissioners may have now as well. So thank you very much, and, uh, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Um, Chris, where are you gonna?
I was just going to say that I see on, on the Zoom that, uh, Linda Pam, Clamplin is here as well from, uh, our own county workforce. She's the Employee Transportation Coordinator, and so there are a lot of work, workplaces that participate in this each year, and, uh, we're glad Thurston County fields a, a team each year for the Bicycle Community Challenge.
Thank you. Uh, Linda, is there anything you'd like to say?
Or maybe she was just listening in, that's fine.
Okay. Questions, commissioners, comments?
No. Chris, you're still the man on the bicycle business as far as I'm concerned. You're, you're living the role. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards and I will, are, uh, we'll never forget the Rochester meeting where Chris showed up after having commuted by bike, and that was pretty impressive, but that was just one of many. Um, I, what's our best group, Chris? Who's our, who's our best department for? Do we, is this a countywide?
Oh, as far as, uh, participation, well, the county, Thurston County usually fields one team.
Okay.
Thurston County commuters, and sometimes that has participation from, uh, Public Works and, uh, Central Services and Public Health and a number of other, uh, county departments, and Thurston Regional Planning Council sometimes jumps in on, on that same team. Um, and then the cities of Olympia and Lacey usually, uh, field pretty large teams, and one of my favorites is, uh, InterCity Transit's Crank It. It for being the InterCity Transit, uh, abbreviation. So they, they get out there and do a great, uh, great job with their team as well. So, and, and then there are a lot of smaller, uh, workplace and neighborhood teams throughout the county. So it's really great overall participation across the community.
Has InterCity Transit, and I got Commissioner Mahina sitting next to me, but Duncan, I mean, before the pandemic, we had that new location downtown and a lot of really cool bicycle programs that were just ramping up, and they had to shut down, and I'm just wondering if they've had a chance to get any of that going again, you know?
Yeah. Glad you mentioned the, uh, the downtown bicycle shop that InterCity Transit runs because that does provide earn a bike classes again, uh, those have resumed. And they also run, and Duncan can probably speak in more detail to this, um, but they also, uh, run programs out at the schools, Safe Roots to School, what they call Walk and Roll. Um, so that is, uh, in full swing now again, uh, and that encourages kids to participate, kids and families to participate in the same Bicycle Community Challenge, and they get a lot of, a lot of schools participating in it as well. So.
Okay, great. Well, I got a new bike in February, so I have no excuse now.
Great.
To get going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Weather permitting, right?
Right.
Well, no, uh, one question, Duncan. It's a question I've been seeing online and, uh, hoping, uh, you can address it for, uh, citizens who are tuning in. It's the question about electric bikes and if electric bikes count.
Electric bikes do count in the BCC. We're, we're happy to welcome people on electric assist bikes, and, um, you know, we, we see electric bikes as, uh, uh, another avenue for people to get involved in bicycling and, uh, a great way to get out of the car and make your trips, uh, on two wheels. So we welcome people on electric assist bikes in the BCC.
Well, thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Chris. Uh, I, I look forward to seeing that Thurston County team, uh, coming up that hill for anyone that works here. That's, that's a tough one.
Workout.
That's a workout. Um, but with that, I am ready for the recognition.
Okay, thank you. This is a formal Thurston County, uh, statement of recognition. Bicycle commuting reduces energy consumption, pollution, and congestion, and is one of the most energy efficient forms of transportation. And bicycling is a mode of transportation well suited to urban environments where trips are short in length and overly congested roads are difficult and costly to expand. Thurston County supports alternatives to inefficient drive alone trips by building bicycle facilities and participating in the Wheel Options Commute Trip Reduction Campaign. InterCity Transit, with sponsors including the Capital Bicycling Club and many area businesses, is hosting the 35th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge during the month of May. All right.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Well, thank, thank you again, Chris. Thank you, Duncan, for being here, and as well as Linda. With that.
Good question about electric bikes.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have thought about that.
I, I saw it online a couple times, and so I thought that was a good question. Okay, with that, we'll move for the opportunity for the public to address the board. Now, there are some guidelines for public comments. Um, the Board of County, Thurston County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. The general speaking guidelines are as follows. Please introduce yourself, including the address you reside in the county. Please address the board, not the audience or staff. Please silence your cell phones for those members in the boardroom. And speakers are limited to a total of four minutes to address the board. Meeting attendees cannot donate their speaking time to another person. No comments that are lewd and offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outburst of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. All materials provided to the county may be considered public records subject to the public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 of the RCW. No remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal. Thank you so much for your cooperation. With that, the first person on my list I have is John Pettit, followed by Tom Bent. Bon. Okay.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live on Rich Road. Today I'm going to be talking, I sent you all, uh, some emails, and I'm going to be talking in regards to the, uh, the contract and lease of the Atrium Building. I say contract and lease because what's insinuated to be a contract within the lease is not a contract. It's a notation. And I would ask you, I'll, I'll look forward to a response on this, uh, and you can, you can send it to me in an email, but part of the connotations in here is that there's going to be, uh, alterations as noted on the plans. I don't know if you've ever bothered looking at the lease, but you have these plans. Guess what? There's not one note on any of them. You have absolutely no definition of what you would be spending money on for a tenant improvement. But you do have this last page here that says you're ready to spend $6 million on nothing. How does that happen? And how is it that you actually decided, and intentionally, I'm going to say, intentionally decided not to have it subject to the procurement policy? It is, it is subject to the procurement policy, and clearly, the one part I enjoyed about reading these new RCWs is it's, it's not only something that typically the commissioners are hung out to dry on, but the failure to go through the policy as an intentional act means even your county manager and your assistant county manager could also equally be responsible for potentially that $6 million. I would like to request formally, in fact, I'd prefer you do it right now, give me the exact RCW that allows you to think that you can move forward without any procurement policy in there. And in saying that, I wanted to emphasize about the idea of intentional. Intentional means that when you have knowledge of something and you choose to do something, or you choose not to do something when you've had the opportunity to do it, that makes it intentional. So, uh, other than being intentional, I realize you probably don't want to answer, but I, I'd really like to hear someone say, no, I didn't intentionally break the law and not get a procurement policy. I would ask this also. Give me one other contract Thurston County has ever been in for $5 million, $6 million without going through a procurement policy procedure. This is, this is criminal. This is criminal, and it's, it's spending money wrongfully that you haven't got. So I'm going to just place it this way. Unless you're willing to say, even right now, no, I'm not doing it intentionally, and yes, I'll make sure we look into this procurement policy fully, I'm going to assume that's your act, that it is an intentional act to avoid the procurement policy, and you want to proceed forward with a gifting of funds to a private property owner. Tax dollars, they aren't yours. They're there for the idea that you're going to be doing some oversight. I guess you're going to have to tell me how that's oversight, but just by deciding that you shouldn't have to get another bid. This is your opportunity to walk away because your assistant county manager didn't even sign the document properly. You can walk away, you can void it out. You can void it out. I know that might not be your particular choice, that because of you have political agenda that you want to go forward with something, but it's the right thing to do. Your actions will speak louder than words. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tom Bond.
Thank you, by the way. I've never been to one of these meetings before, but I got a little concerned when I got a letter from Thurston Regional Planning Council asking me to give them a definition. My location of living is South County. I'm in District 3, of course, Ty Munster's section. And I live off of Equus Ridge Lane. I've had property out that way for, well, probably good 40, 50 years at this point. But my concern is that we're spending money procured for this atrium, and it's great that that came up first, and taking it away from our roads. Now, as you all know, we live out in the South County. South County, and I would say, of course, Gary's region is probably the worst roads that we have in the district. So my question is that we're spending $10 million over two years when we currently have a deficit of $150 million on roads. And for being an easement user, I've had my easement users in the last three years have gone from a $500 cost to repair to a $30,000 cost to repair, and now I've got to take them to a class action lawsuit to be able to sue for it. So if the county continues that, it's going to make our process even worse every year. So if we're pulling, you know, $4 million out of the budget of that, plus we're billing out this new building, and we've got a great building here, I think we could probably spend that money in this area. So if we even took $7 million of that, $10 million, put it towards this side, the roads, and take the other $3 million and redo this building, I think that would be a big use of our money. So I had to come in and bring that up because I've really got to respond to the Regional Planning Council, and I don't have an answer for them. Do you guys do? Is there any way we're going to repair our roads as we go through this? You know, if we keep pulling money out of those roads, me as a contractor and as a financial institution, it's certainly not prudent for us to do that, right? And being in this county for 45 years, I don't see the point. We should maintain our infrastructure, put our people to work, right? We have roadspeople for a reason. Let's get them to work, which, of course, right now, we're short on folks anyways. So that was my position on this, and I'm a little disappointed to see that, but can you get me an answer why we would do that over repairing our roads so I can let the council know why we'd do that, right? That's my question that I have. So if you would like my email address, I would appreciate that. I'll give it to you, and then I'll be able to answer their question. And then the second thing, Ty, I've been trying to get to see you for about six months and haven't made it to your schedule. If you find time, I have a veteran program of which we all supported to get you into the role. We'd like to bring up a veteran program that we're starting. It's a veteran outreach program in affordable housing that we're putting in, and I'm donating quite a bit of property to it, and so is Maryland and Port Blakely. So I want to bring that in. We're going to try to use the sewage system that we have in the South County already that you guys have put in a few years ago with the federal funding. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, my list, is there any in the boardroom that would like to provide?
Yes, we do appear to have a few citizens. So I would like to invite Kami Rowe. If you would like to give testimony, please go ahead, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Kami Rowe, and I represent the Oya Hotel located in Palm Water. Thurston County signed an agreement to use this facility from September 2020 till March 2022. The county is not in compliance with provisions listed in the contract. Number one, the county vacated the facility a month earlier than signed term of the contract. Per Item 9.17.1, in quotation, the county must provide additional payment for 30 days to allow the hotel to ramp up its marketing strategy. The hotel operations were shut down for one and a half years. The foot traffic and the awareness of the hotel existence... I'm sorry, hotel existence ceased for one and a half years. The hotel needs time to rebuild the clientele. Number two, per Item 3.2 of the signed contract, tenants shall be responsible for all insurance and insurance costs. Tenants shall deliver appropriate evidence to landlords that adequate insurance is enforced and issued by companies reasonably satisfactory to landlords. Number three, per Item 1.4 of the contract, tenants shall be liable for any damages to the hotel during its tenancy. There were damages caused during the county's tenancy that require contractors to be hired for repairs. The invoices for revamping fee and requests where insurance information were sent to the county a month ago. The invoice for Part 1 of the damages was sent a week ago. The county has not paid both invoices and has not sent me the insurance information. It has totally ignored my contacts, has not acknowledged the receipt of my correspondence as I have requested. As stated in previous commissioners' meeting, I firmly believe that equity must take place and feel that I have been treated unequally. I surely hope this incident is not because of my race and ethnicity. However, I cannot help thinking that my ethnicity and race is the cause of the issue. How can you county commissioners help me for the county to live up to its terms of the contract and make me believe that what's going on is not due to my ethnicity and race? That is all I'm asking for county to fill its terms of the contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Susan Yocum. Ms. Yocum, if you would like to testify?
Yes, thank you. My name is Susan Yocum. I live on Young Road out on Steamboat Island Peninsula in Thurston County. And I sent you guys a one-page document. I had some more ideas about doing something regarding the fireworks. And all my comments are specifically related to the unincorporated areas of the county districts 1, 2, and 3, my specifically Steamboat, but I'm sure the issues go over to the other two peninsulas as well. One of the ideas I had was to establish a new tiered method for fireworks. You have a ban that has no hammer, no consequences, no enforcement. So in trying to come up with another thing to do, a tiered method that would allow fireworks to be classified in a method where, like on a scale of 1 to 5 or 1 to 10, where the ones that are most likely to start a fire are not sold during the time of a burn ban. I don't care if those are 1s or 10s. They're just, they're not sold during the time of the burn ban. However, fireworks not likely to start a fire would be sold. And I do understand that the volume does not equal the fire risk. Okay, so that was one idea. Another idea I had is relating to public safety and fireworks in a neighborhood education activity method. Knowledge is power. And I do not believe that all the residents that live out here in these unincorporated areas are aware of their physical environment. So I am proposing an annual distribution of educational material at the small local events like, you know, neighborhood parties. Griffin is having one on June 25th. And I'm sure that all these small communities have a party at some point. Father's Day, Flag Day, Mother's Day, Picket Day, but many are before the Fourth of July. Now, and this information could also be handed out at grocery stores, but I'm proposing a handout with like five maps. And I've given you guys four of these five maps in the past. One is a county commissioner district map. Two is the Wildland Urban Interface Hazard Area map. Three is a map showing the limited road access in and out of these three peninsulas. There's like one main road for Steamboat from the end all the way to the tip, and it's only two lanes. And I would include on that map, number three, the information about the location of the fire stations. They are not all staff. Some of them are volunteer. Steamboat has four stations. Cooper Point seems to have three, and six on Boston Harbor being split between four on Boston Harbor and two on Johnson Point. I would include a hydrology map and the aquifer recharge area fact sheet, as well as the Orco's Protected Habitat Water Map of Puget Sound. People don't know, they don't understand that the water comes from the sound and the aquifers, not just out of the spigot. So I have provided you those maps. I would be happy to provide them again. And I'm hoping that having this information would give residents a cause to pause before discharging fireworks during a fire ban. Because I don't think people know about the Wild Urban Interface Hazard Area that we're just like, ready to go. It's very scary. So if you can provide the information or help me, that would be great. Otherwise, I'll try to do some myself, but I should not have to bear the cost of making copies and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Johanna. Mr. Hannah, would you like to provide testimony today?
As I have a back neck, and I will not. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all the public that I see. If I have missed anyone...
I see a hand raise on...
That is... Already, she already provided that.
Okay.
Kami Rowe. Yeah, Ms. Rowe.
Okay. Anyone here? I'm going to do a last call in the boardroom if anyone here would like to provide testimony. No? Okay. With that, we move on to the county managers' update.
Thank you, Commissioner. County Manager Chavez was unable to be with us this afternoon. On his behalf, I would like to follow up on Mr. Pettit's comments, those that he provided today and many other related comments to the Commissioner's office that we've received alleging wrongdoing and that the county is operating outside of the context of the law. All the allegations have been discussed in many executive sessions with our deputy prosecuting attorney. As a result, and under the advisement of legal counsel, it has been determined that the county is operating within the context of the law and within county policy and code. So with that, that is the only comment I have for you this afternoon.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
I have to take this opportunity to point out that, as far as I know, RCW 3930020 that has to do with contracts requiring competitive bidding and violations by a municipal officer in the penalties has not been yet reviewed. County Manager, the county manager this morning, I think he was just mistaken because we've reviewed so many things. This is brand new. I can't find that we have reviewed this RCW with our legal counsel. And I would ask if legal counsel is present, maybe they could come on right now and point out that maybe I'm mistaken, maybe I missed something, but I can't find where that has been discussed. It's a completely new item brought forward by Mr. Pettit. This morning, the county manager did make a mistake and say, "No, we've covered that already." Well, no, on this particular one, I can't find that we've covered it anywhere. So that makes me doubly nervous about this whole process. Now, you know, I kind of hate to keep making a fuss over this because obviously I wasn't in favor of this process in the first place. So I want to put that out front, that I voted against this. I don't mind being beat by the democratic process as we move forward on something, but it scares me to death that we could be found in violation of any of these laws. So I just want to bring out that I'm concerned. I would hope that we could get something in writing from our legal counsel, but if legal counsel was available here today, possibly, even if verbally for now, it could be pointed out that, "No, you're mistaken, Commissioner. We really did go over this, and we did it six months ago." I don't know that, but I really think it is important that we follow the law in everything that we do. That's all I'm trying to do is make sure we do the right thing, so.
Right. I'm absolutely confident, Commissioner, that we have followed the law in every instance in this process.
Are you absolutely confident that we have followed and discussed RCW 39.30.020?
I don't know that we have discussed it, but... And I will give the qualification that I am not an attorney. I am a financial and government professional and expert. But if I look at this particular RCW, it is not related to process. It is related to penalties if one should not follow a process. So I know that we have followed appropriate processes, and there is not a process, per se, embedded in this particular RCW.
Madam Chair, do you know, have we got legal counsel in attendance at our meeting today?
They are. Elizabeth is on...
Anybody care to comment on that? I mean, from... I respect your position, but you're not legal counsel.
That's true.
We get certain amount... We get a certain amount of protection from legal counsel, that's all.
Right. And as we have discussed in the past, legal counsel provides you legal opinions in the executive session. That's where they give legal advice.
Okay, well, I can see this. I'm just expressing a concern. So that'll be it for me, ma'am. Thank you.
So let's schedule an executive session with...
Absolutely.
Okay. With that, Commissioner Minster? Any questions? I don't want to...
No, I think this issue was addressed about nine months ago, but Elizabeth Petrich, our counsel, can confirm that. Same issues kind of just keep coming up over and over.
Okay. So we have two public hearings that were set to start at 3:00. For any citizens that are watching, we will be going through our agenda right now and through some items, and we will start shortly thereafter. So if, you know, if you'll please keep waiting as we get through our agenda, we'll start those public hearings as soon as possible. So with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Consent Item 3A.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. On this same topic, being as the Assistant County Manager is here, and she's also our financial officer, I didn't see anything in reviewing this that looks like it's expenditures towards the atrium. Would you know the answer to that, ma'am?
There are no expenditures related to the atrium in this bachelor list.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we're watching for those, for you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Minster?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia?
Aye.
Consent on items. Next, on department items. The first item is from Central Services, Item 4A, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bits for Countywide Security Improvements, Project Number 25571.
Mary, this chair?
Maybe Jennifer's doing it?
Marius had been on... However, he's not, he's not...
I am here, but I'm losing your audio. I'm sorry.
We can hear you, Marius.
Yeah, I'm losing your audio. I'm sorry. I'm here online, but I'm, I don't hear.
Right, please go ahead and present.
Yes, our project represents six sites. We are upgrading security system. This is well overdue. We're taking care of some cameras, especially DAREs, buttons. Situation of needs per each site is different, but we are working on this project as continuation of previous approach to main county courthouse campus. And with this project, we'll be improving greatly the overall security status of our county sites.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm hoping this is enough of a general overview of projects. Six sites, six different tasks on each side. Budget between $400,000 to $500,000 depends on bidding situation.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
I guess I would just point out that we've had quite a few discussions about this upgrade. As for the public, as you'll find as we go through many of these items, if you have a particular interest in any one of them, you can watch our YouTube channel and see the discussions in the past. So if we're not spending a lot of time on it, that's the reason why, I might point out. And no, I'm, I'm satisfied. We're doing the right thing on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Minzer?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the resolution and call for sealed bids for Countywide Security Improvements Project 25571.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Minzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mejia?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, Community Planning and Economic Development, Item 5A, Interagency Agreement Between Washington State University Extension and Thurston County. And Joshua Cummings is, is zoom?
Hello, Board of County Commissioners. I am Joshua Cummings, the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, here to present the item for WSU Extension, the partnership therein. Community Planning and Economic Development CPAD is the connecting organization between WSU, Washington State University, and Thurston County. And WSU Extension is that group within our organization that does great work in our community in agricultural programs, the master recyclers, master gardeners, native plant salvage, SNAP Ed, 4-H youth programs, and many other community efforts. This action for you today is an annual formalization of our MOU with WSU Extension, and all of the items within it have been approved in the budget therefore, previously.
Thank you. Questions?
No questions. Same issue, though. We've discussed it a bunch.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the interagency agreement between Thurston County and Washington State University Extension for a total of $165,156 for the period of January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, and to authorize the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to sign the agreement and the County Manager to execute any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
I guess the only discussion I'd have is I'd like to compliment our Extension Officer, Stephen Bromwell, for the great cooperation that we've had over the years.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next, Emergency Services, Item 6A, Public Assistant Grant FEMA Funding for COVID Response. Ben Miller Todd?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Ben Miller Todd, the Interim Assistant Director for Emergency Services. As a result of the Presidential Disaster Declaration for COVID-19, Thurston County received a grant from the Washington State Military Department for FEMA public assistance. This grant provides funds to Thurston County for the emergency protective measures taken in response to COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic. The term of the grant runs from January 20th, 2020, at the beginning of the pandemic, through March 22nd, 2024. The grant does not have a match requirement through June 30th of 2022, and for costs incurred after July 1st, the federal cost share will shift to 90%. We are asking for an approval to move forward with, with this grant. And if you have any further questions, let me know.
Thank you. Okay, questions? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Minzer?
No.
Okay, I'm ready for them last week.
I move to approve FEMA Public Assistance Agreement Number D20-235 with the Washington State Military Department for FEMA COVID Response for the term of January 20th, 2020, to March 22nd, 2024, and authorize the County Manager to sign the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10% of the final dollar figure. The final dollar figure will be made through amendments for projects submitted by Thurston County and authorized by the state.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Mejia?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next, Public Works, Item 7A, On-Call Engineering and Professional Consultant Services Contracts. Rick Thomas is here.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Rick Thomas with Public Works. In order to augment and supplement our staff's technical abilities, Public Works solicited requests for qualifications in 2018 for a wide variety of professional services, including civil engineering, transportation engineering, geotechnical investigation and analysis, cultural, historical, environmental, material testing and inspection, construction contract administration, solid waste facilities, water and sewer utilities, stormwater, and other associated fields. Eight on-call contracts were awarded in July of 2018 with a total maximum funding limit of $5 million. In February of 2019, two additional on-call consultant contracts were approved, each with a $500,000 maximum limit, and four of the existing contracts had funding limits increased by a total of $3 million. This resulted in a total maximum funding limit of $9 million for all 10 of the on-call consultant contracts. In May of 2021, the Director of Public Works increased six of the on-call contracts as previously authorized by the Board of County Commissioners, bringing the total maximum funding limit to $9.9 million. The contracts were initially awarded for two base years with four additional option years. The second option year will be completed in July with the anticipation of awarding the third option year to start on August the 1st. These contracts allow staff to quickly obtain needed services in a variety of areas and keep Public Works projects on schedule. The community has greatly benefited from these consultants having helped Public Works advance over $30 million of improvements to county parks, utilities, roads, stormwater, and solid waste facilities in the last, in the past four years. The contracts allow work to define on a task order basis for each scope of work needed. And each contract is independent and will be judged separately for extension as appropriate for Public Works' needs. Public Works is asking the county commissioners to approve an amendment for several of these on-call contractors to have their limits increased. Are there any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Rick, the only thing I might point out is, as these contracts do get increased, the funding source depends on what the particular contractor is working on, I believe. So it could be road fund or other funds. Is that right?
That is correct, including grant funds, many other funds. It does not, does not have funds coming out of the general obligation funds.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner?
Nope, gone through this.
I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the amendments to the on-call engineering and professional services contracts to increase funding limits with KPG Somas Inc. and OTAC Inc. from $600,000 to $800,000, with AHBL Inc. from $600,000 to $900,000, with KPFF Inc. and SJC Alliance from 1.2, $1,200,000 to $1,500,000, and with HDR Engineering from $2,500,000 to $3,200,000, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the amendments and future amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, there's one issue I'd like to have the Assistant County Manager address. When it says with KPFF Inc. and SJC Alliance from 1.2 million to 1.5 million, that's a cumulative, right? That's not each one of those bumped up that much, is it? Is there a contract with each one separately?
That is a great question for Rick. I'm going to ask Rick to clarify that. I think it's for both, but...
I'd be happy to clarify that. We have individual contracts with each one of the consultants. And in the example that you gave, Commissioner Edwards, KPFF would have their limit raised from 2.1 million up to 2.5, and SCJ would have their contract funding limit increased from 1.2 to 1.5 million.
Oh, okay, I guess at this point, that isn't the way I really took that at our work session this morning. So it's twice as much as far as the dollar amount than what we had it up this morning? I just maybe asked my seatmates how they took it. I, I don't know the answer to that right now. And I'd like to know if this is a time element on this.
I don't think there are, but maybe a clarifying question. Rick, are we talking about five contracts here or six? How many contracts in total are under this motion?
There are, one, two, three, four, five. There are six, six contracts within this motion.
Right, so KPFF Inc. has a contract that will then be 1.5 million, and SJC Alliance has a contract that will, if the board takes this action, will be 1.5 million. Those are two separate contracts.
I take it that question is to Rick?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm...
Yes, that's, he's just nod if my statement is correct.
You're, Assistant County Manager, your statement is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was just an effort to shorten the verbiage of this motion. Otherwise, I'd read the numbers over and over, so...
However, you know, to, to what I believe is your concern, Commissioner, there is funding available in the various funds to cover these costs. These are maximum expenditure contracts, and, and the work is necessary to go with the, the projects that they're connected to.
I'm not sure. I object to the contracts being adjusted, but I'm quite concerned that I left the meeting this morning not realizing it's twice as much as it is here. And because of that, I'm going to ask that this item be removed from today's agenda and put on next week's agenda so we could really make sure this business about, I'm not quite sure of this, that's pretty serious stuff when we're talking 10, 12 million dollars, you know, versus, no, I, I just think it's an oversight, but I would like to have this addressed to make sure, depending on what my seatmates feel about it.
I asked the County Manager whether these numbers were identical to the numbers that were... Most of my brain power on this issue was from the pre, not this morning, was from our, we had a full briefing, separate from agenda setting.
Last week.
That's where I put my head to the numbers and the contracts. And so this morning, I just wanted to know whether this action item, which is worded slightly differently, was consistent with exactly, or whether, with what we'd been presenting in the briefing, or whether there'd been any adjustments. County Manager said it was exactly the same, that no adjustments have been made. If that's true, I'm comfortable, because I went, we went through this for my, to my satisfaction, not this morning, but at the full briefing on it. But if there's been changes, or if there's some discrepancy, then I don't mind to spend the time to clarify that.
So it's my understanding that that work session was last Thursday, I believe, when I was not in the office. So again, I'm going to turn to Rick.
So I have the presentation pulled up.
Oh, wonderful.
From last week. And what was presented to us was the AHBL from $600,000 to $900,000. HDR from 2.5 million to 3.2 million. KPFF from 1.2 million to 1.5 million. KPG from $600,000 to $800,000. OTA K, sorry, $600,000 to $800,000. And SCJ, 1.2 to 1.5.
So that is exactly in lines with this motion.
So I'm personally good to go.
Commissioner Edwards?
Based on the information you've provided, Chair, I'm satisfied with this at this point in time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I, I went online to the paperwork from last week's presentation, which, there was a presentation for the public on this. It was last Thursday. And it was at 2:00 PM, if anyone's interested in going back and looking at that.
I just, I would ask staff, though, to please make it a little clearer when we're doing this, is all. Just, I realize they were trying to make a shorter motion and such, okay.
Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Minzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mejia?
Aye.
Motion passes. With that, we move on to Item 7B, which is a contract award for Close Landfill Groundwater Reporting Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Beckford, Solid Waste Manager, Public Works Department. So this item, now the Thurston County Public Works Solid Waste Division operates the Waste and Recovery Center in Lacey, and it's the main transfer station which accepts municipal solid waste from both municipal, commercial, and self-help to public customers. The Waste and Recovery Center includes the Hawks Prairie landfill, which has been closed, and it was capped and closed in April of 2000. The closed landfill is operated and maintained by the county and is currently monitored and controlled in accordance with regulatory post-closure reporting requirements for Washington Administrative Code, Section 173-351, for groundwater leachate. Public Works is responsible for the collection of groundwater samples from the closed landfill, and testing is performed by an accredited analytical laboratory. The county is required to file quarterly and annual reports of the results with the Department of Ecology in compliance with regulatory, with their regulatory requirements. So these reporting services are required on a recurring quarterly basis. Award of the Landfill Groundwater Reporting Services Contract will allow the county to maintain compliance with regulatory reporting requirements to the Department of Ecology. So on March 17th, 2022, a total of two proposals were received for landfill groundwater reporting services. These proposals were received in response to the request for proposals, which was advertised on February 17th, 2022. Public Works evaluated and scored the proposals based on the contractor's qualifications, experience, past performances, and references, key personnel, technical approach, and of course, price. The highest ranking proposal was received from Landau Associates, Inc. of Olympia, Washington. The term of the proposed contract would be a maximum of five years, consisting of a one-year base period and four one-year renewal options. The maximum ceiling amount to be, could potentially be expended, would be $300,000 over the course of that five years. Funds would be obligated, obligated each year and paid through revenues from solid waste tipping fees. And I'd be willing to answer any other questions. And I'd be willing to answer any other questions you might have.
Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, I have one question. The highest ranking, is that the same as the lowest bid?
Not necessarily, Commissioner. There's a set of criteria that they're scored on. I mentioned many of those are qualifications, their experience, their personnel, these are assigned a certain number of points. And the one that had the most points would be the highest ranking. In this particular case, the highest ranking was also the lowest cost in this particular case.
Well, that makes it easy. Thank you.
Commissioner Minzer?
No questions.
Okay, I'll call for the, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to award the services contract for landfill groundwater reporting for the county's closed landfill to Landau Associates, Inc., Olympia, Washington, for a total amount of $300,000, and to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any amendments up to 10% of the contract amount, and approve renewal options as needed.
Second?
Removed and seconded. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Minzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mejia?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Now, 7C, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for 2022 Chip Seal Project.
Good afternoon, this is Vasile Borota with Public Works, Associate Civil Engineer. And Public Works is requesting permission from the Board to call for sealed bids for the 2022 chip seal project. The roads scheduled this year are in northeast and southeast quadrant. The chip seal treatment can extend the life of a road, road surface up to 10 years. And in this year's project, the cost is 2.9 million dollars, and it will be paid from the County Road Fund. As usually, the contract will be advertised in the Olympian, Seattle Daily Journal of Commerce, and then also posted online on the Builders Exchange website. Chip Seal Project is part of the 2022 Public Works budget, is also listed in the Transportation Improvement Program, posted for 2022, 2027 period. And then also, it is consistent with the Initiative 8 of the County Strategic Plan Initiative that calls for support to robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community. And I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, I might just ask for verification. If the price of oil is $30 a barrel, this project, we'd be able to do a lot more than if the price of oil is $100 a barrel. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And we will stay within the budgeted amount of 2.9 million. And if the bids come higher, then we will have to cut some roads and not complete. We plan right now 50 miles of roads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Minzer?
I'm curious on the decision about which miles get replaced. One of our public comments today was about the, a comment was made that the worst roads in the county are on the east side and of the county. And you're saying that all of our chip seal is going on the east side. So I'm wondering, is it a mechanical process? Or is there subjective judgment of staff that goes into deciding, well, these roads are in a little worse condition. Maybe they're not as old, but they're more heavily used, or they weren't done right first, begin with. How is that prioritization done in choosing the roads that'll be chip sealed?
We do have Decision 3. And this treatment, the chip seal, it is applied on the roads that are kind of a fair condition, not too bad, because they cover cracks up to a quarter of an inch. And then if there are structural issues with the road, then those roads need to be overlaid, add more structure to them. So it's kind of the medium state that, you know, we decide based on that. So, and actually, the program that we have allows that to select based on, on, you know, rating of the road, and then also age. And plus, we visually inspect, and that's part of the decision process.
That's a good reminder. So there may be roads chip sealed when there's worse roads out there. But if I remember correctly, the, it's exponent, I don't remember the factor, but it's exponentially more expensive to do the more comprehensive repair to the road versus the chip seal.
Yes, and overall, the kind of mentality of the pavement preservation program is to apply treatments sooner, when it's cheaper to treat those roads instead of waiting when the expense is higher. So for example, a mile of a chip road costs 50, and actually, this year, we expect it will cost 60,000 per mile. And then an overlay, it can go to up to 400,000 per mile. So that's kind of the ratio of expense.
Six or seven to one?
Yes.
Got it. That's what I, you know, that's consistent with my memory.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions. I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for the 2022 Chip Seal Project, CP number 98022.
Second?
Removed and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Minzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mejia?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item, thank you. Item 7D, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for Little Rock Road Southwest Culvert Replacement near Sergeant Road Southwest. Project number 63009. Catherine is here. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Tran, and I am an Associate Civil Engineer with Public Works. Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for sealed bids for a construction contract to replace the Little Rock Road Southwest Culvert near Sergeant Road Southwest. This project will replace a fish barrier culvert along a tributary to the Black River as part of the Thurston County Fish Passage Enhancement Program. The existing 36-inch culvert located at Little Rock Road Southwest is considered a fish barrier and will be replaced with a 40-foot-long and 15-foot-wide concrete culvert. This culvert was previously purchased through a separate solicitation, which saved three months of lead time. This allowed Public Works to contract for the manufacture and delivery of the new structure in advance for the fish window during which it is required to be installed. The engineer's estimate for contract award is approximately $1 million. Public Works leveraged REIT II funds set aside for the program and received a $45,000 grant for construction costs from the Salmon Recovery Fund administered through the Recreation and Conservation Office. Total project cost is anticipated to be approximately $2.3 million, which includes expenses such as alternative analysis, engineering design, right-of-way, permitting, construction administration, and the purchase of the new structure. The replacement of Little Rock Road Southwest Culvert is one of two projects that will be constructed in 2022 through the Fish Passage Enhancement Program. Established in 2017, this program is entering its fifth construction season. With the addition of habitat gained from both projects this summer, the total mileage of spawning and rearing habitat opened by the program since inception is approximately 17 miles. This project is in the 2022 Public Works Budget, 2022 to 2027 Transportation Improvement Program in Capital Facilities Plan, and is in alignment with the County Strategic Plan Initiative 8 to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community, and Initiative 9 to support environmental health and climate stabilization. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Edwards?
By any chance, would you know how many miles of additional spawning ground we will be creating through this process?
For this summer, we specifically will be opening about three miles of habitat for salmon.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Minzer?
No.
No? Okay. I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve a Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for the receipt and opening of said bids for the Little Rock Road Southwest Culvert Replacement near Sergeant Road Southwest, CP 63009.
Second?
Okay. I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Minzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mejia?
Aye. Motion passes. We've just been advised that we have to pause the current Board of County Commissioners meeting. We'll also be holding the condemnation public hearing. With that, I will adjourn this meeting for now.
Well, I, it's not adjourning the meeting, it's calling a recess.
Okay, so I'll call a recess for...
Recess this meeting, and then we'll need to go to the different Zoom link for the public hearing on the condemnation, I believe is what we need to do. Do what? Yes. So it's anticipated that the public hearing will take approximately 20 minutes.
Okay.
And we'll ask staff that were here to address items on the remaining agenda to please stand by and rejoin us at that time.
Okay, so we have two items left on the agenda. We'll be in recess from the Board of County Commissioners for 20 minutes. We will be joining the public hearing for the condemnation. So...
All right, we'll be back.
We'll be back.
More to come.
More to come.
Good afternoon. This is a public hearing for a proposed condemnation. It is Tuesday, April 19, 2022. It is 3:44 PM. We apologize for starting a little bit later. We had to, our Board of County Commissioners went a little bit longer, and we have paused it, and we'll be resuming that later. I am the Chair of the Board, Carolina Mejia. To my right is Vice Chair, Taya Minzer. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Today, we are joined by Assistant County Manager, Rachel Campbell, as well as Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on the proposed condemnation, the resolution, and interlocal agreement of the property located at 1904 and 1906 26th Avenue Northwest, Olympia, Washington, 98502, adjacent to LP Brown Elementary School. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person, by Zoom, emailed and commented, or mailed and commented. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Craig Chalem, Compliance Unit Supervisor, will provide information on this topic. Assuming those on Zoom wish to testify, we will read your name aloud. We will read names on a sign-up sheet three at a time, and we don't have enough people for room 152. But you will have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. The public hearing is now open. Craig will now present background information of the proposed amendment, written comments submitted, and any additional information requested by the Board. Craig?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you, Chair Mejia. My name is Craig Chalem, Compliance Unit Supervisor, and I'm here on behalf of Community Planning and Economic Development Department's Compliance Team to request, to respectfully request that the Board consider and approve the Resolution and interlocal agreement set before you in the mutual effort to eliminate neighborhood blight and advance the shared interest of public safety between Thurston County and the Olympia School District, number 111. Also, to direct staff to proceed with the process of to condemn 1904 26th Avenue Northwest specifically. A little bit of background on this case. In 2015, the Compliance Unit received a request to investigate a vacant structure and trash at the subject site. After visiting the site, it was referred to Environmental Health for further action on the solid waste. That year, both Community Planning and Economic Development and Public Health and Social Services, Environmental Health staff issued warning letters. However, both the property owner and the lending institution did not respond. In 2019, Community Planning and Economic Development Department deemed the structure to be an imminent threat to the public health, safety, and general welfare. And a notice to abate the structure was issued and posted to the property and was sent by law certified in first-class mail. It also went unresponded to. On February 15, 2020, the duplex was irreparably damaged by fire. Since then, it has been secured by fencing. And I would just like to iterate, since 2015, there have been many detailed enforcement actions notice of violations, civil penalties, the abatement to... the abatement to, abate the danger structure, and court actions, and they have all been posted to the property and sent to the property owner, certified mail, and first class, and they have all been returned with no forwarding address. As CPED Director Josh Cummings has relayed to the Board of County Commissioners, these actions have followed the Title 26 Code Compliance process and led CPED to implement the Board's guidance to address properties of this nature in a solution-oriented partnership process, this being the next formal step in that process. Staff request that the Board move to close the public hearing and approve the resolution and interlocal agreement between Thurston County and the Olympia School District Number 111, and authorize the Thurston County Prosecuting Attorney to proceed with condemnation. As far as public comments have been received, we have had two, and they were both in favor of condemnation. Director Cummings and I are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards, question?
Not as much a question as a clarification. I notice on this form from Economic Development Department, Community Planning and Economic Development, it directs staff to proceed with the process, 1904 26th Avenue Northwest specifically. And doesn't that also include 1904 and 1906?
It does. However, when you look it up in the assessor's records online, you will only find 1904. So that's why I use it for...
Good enough. Just didn't want to leave something out. Thank you very much for that attention to detail.
Thank you. Commissioner Minzer?
Craig, who's paying for the protective fencing around the property?
Currently, we are.
Started out with the Fire Department, I think, and then...
That's, that's correct. After the February fire, the McLean Fire District helped sue, secured the property with a cyclone fence, and had paid for it for approximately a year.
Okay.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to public testimony. Is there a sign-up sheet? We'll start with members in the boardroom, and then we will proceed to Zoom. I only have one person signed up, Mr. John Pettit.
We'll get you.
We'll get you. Don't worry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's John Pettit. I live on Rich Road Southeast. I don't always agree with things that happen with, through CPED, but this is a statement that society has certain levels of responsibility to clean up, to clean up the environment, protect our children, protect our, every element. This has been long overdue, if anything. Unfortunately, even, even the process of doing what you're going to be doing here, if you move it forward, it'll still take some time. And, you know, it's unfortunate the property owners or the financial institution doesn't choose to respond, but I strongly would encourage you to move it forward as quickly as possible. And while eminent domain is certainly a legal procedure that can take you over the edge, if there is an ability, I think you may even have a couple real estate agents that work representing the county at times. If they can come to some form of a agreement without having to go completely through the courts, it might be more expedient and quick in order to accomplish it. So just recommending whatever can get the job quick, and thank goodness you're moving forward. This will set a pathway for future cleanup operations on facilities, properties, and everything that may be damaging the environment, our children, us, everyone around. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Benway?
My name is Jay Benway. I live at 1903 26th Avenue Northwest. My first comment is that it would be helpful to have the countdown clock where speakers can see it, because presumably that's for me, and I can't see it and address you at the same time. My second comment is that I am in favor of the proposed condemnation. Eminent domain is an extreme remedy, but I believe that in this case it's justified. I have a few ancillary comments, though, I'd like to make. When is that? Throughout this process, as far as I know, there's been no notice to the neighbors. There's been physical notice on the property that has been to the property owner. There's a letter right now that was posted a few days ago that is to the property owner. There are no signs saying "community meeting, public hearing" on this property. I live right across the street from the property. I've received no notice from the county at all. I was fortunate enough that a neighbor was walking by and told me. So I understand that. I don't think it's required that you provide such notice, but when you are dealing with real property issues, and there's real property neighbors right there, I strongly encourage you to do some sort of outreach. We actually all have mailboxes literally right there on 26th. So that's my first comment. My second comment is that I don't, I did not have an opportunity to review the draft agreement that I understand you're taking a look at. I would strongly encourage you to consider a public green space for that property. As you probably know, there are many fewer parks in West Olympia than there are in East Olympia. I was very surprised when I moved from East Olympia to West Olympia. There is no public green space within walking distance of that property, and this is an opportunity to provide something that would really benefit the neighborhood and the community. If you do go forward in a partnership with the school district, I encourage you to condition that contract on some sort of public benefit for the property. If not a public green space, which again is what I would urge, then perhaps a way to alleviate the traffic difficulties that we encounter on pickup and drop-off times would be another public benefit for the neighborhood. But if the school district is allowed to use that corner, to use that property, which is on a corner, to use it for storage, to put a modular building on there, or as has been reported in the press, to use it as a staging area for a major construction project that they have planned, that will certainly detract from the, the quality of life in the neighborhood and detract from the community as well. And so I don't think that the neighbors that have been lobbying for years to have this property cleaned up, I don't think that that what they envisioned was to have a construction staging area on that property potentially for months or years. So thank you very much. Again, I live directly across the street from the subject property. My name is Jay Benway. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Carl Noble?
My name is Kyle Noble, and I live at French Road, 2613 French Road, and that's the property directly adjacent to the, the property in question. And we, we are the ones most, that have been most impacted by the abandoned property for the last 20 years that I've lived there. And we strongly support the partnership proposal with Thurston County and the Olympia School District to take the property under eminent domain, clean it, and sell it back to the school district. We agree that this partnership can resolve the ongoing public health and safety issues on the site and benefit the community. As we talked about, the county was, the county issued a notice of violation seven years ago after over a decade of concerns voiced by the community of unsafe activities and conditions. With low follow-up on that action, the site became a magnet for looters, squatters, who we believe started the dangerous house fire over two years ago. The site has remained a hazard since. As you know, young schoolchildren from the neighboring LP Brown School witness the site every day. The proposed partnership action is an opportunity to set an example for our children on caring for our environment. We can teach how local government can work together with community to solve complex issues. Please take this opportunity to do so. And as neighbors, we offer our help in cleaning and maintaining a restored site until a more permanent solution is achieved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom would like to provide testimony? Okay. We'll move on to Zoom.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a number of people who have joined us on Zoom, and I'm just going to go down the list that I see. So the first name is Beth Woods. Ms. Woods, would you like to provide testimony? Not...
You're on mute, Beth.
So both of my sons attend LP Brown Elementary, and so this is our fourth year attending there, and we've seen that corner house go through a lot of disarray, and I know that it's been a big eyesore and a dangerous environment. My background is in trafficking prevention, and so having a house that's that close of proximity to a school campus has also been a big concern, especially knowing that there have been squatters in there and a lot of illegal activities happening there. So my primary concern is for the children's safety, and I would love to see that turned over to the school district to hopefully benefit the community and the neighbors, and of course alleviate the traffic congestion that happens also for drop-off and pickup. And yeah, thank you for bringing this to the attention to move forward.
Thank you. Will you please provide your name and address for the record?
My name is Beth Woods, and I live at 1414 Division Street Northwest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brenda Burns. Ms. Burns?
Hi there. I have no comment at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, Deb Keim. Ms. Keim is not unmuting, so I will move on to Dwight Haller.
Yes. Hello. My apologies. By registering, I didn't intend to testify, so I'll allow somebody else to speak. Take my time.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Elizabeth Hines. Ms. Hines is also not unmuting. Judy Mason.
I registered for the Zoom meeting, but I sent my comments in a written form. I am for the proposed condemnation of the, of the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. We did receive your comments. And next, we have Mail Oatman.
My name's Miley Oatman, and this is Lucy Oatman. We are community members who live on French Road, just around the corner from LP Brown, and Lucy and her brother both go to LP Brown. So I'm both excited to support condemning this property from a personal living perspective, as well as for all the kids at LP Brown. So I hadn't planned to speak, but definitely for it, if it helps the cause, and totally echo Kyle's sentiment. If there's community potential to support the cleanup, we're all in. Do you want to say anything?
Wonderful. Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Mark Kaufman.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just echo an earlier speaker who had two ideas for use of the property. The first thing that occurs to me is that even though we don't have large green spaces in the area, there is still outdoor space around the school, and as everybody who lives in the area knows, there is a major problem with parking and pickup times for the children and parents. I live at 1834 27th Avenue, just around the corner from LP Brown, and frequently at dismissal time, it's almost impossible to get through that pickup line of cars. So if the Commissioners and the school district are able to come to an agreement, I would strongly recommend that that area be used as a parking, an open parking area for people to be able to pull in and take them off the street so that the traffic that goes by there for 15 to 20 minutes at dismissal time doesn't get backed up. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, Regina Reeves.
I have no comment at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Next, we have Robert Burrell.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Robert Burrell. I live at 2842 Calais Lane, which is about a block and a half away from the school, and I strongly support the position of eminent domain and being able to convert the space to support LP Brown. There is definitely a problem during pickup and drop-off times in the morning and the evenings for traffic. It's a safety hazard. There is a slight hill on 26th there, right in front of the school. It can be a little bit blocking for view, as well as during any wintertime driving for slippery roads, things like that. So absolutely, yes, support it, and looking for a way to alleviate the, the traffic problems that are endemic with the school. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Tina Danielson.
My name is Tina Danielson. I live now at 5224 Keating Road. I came to you guys a few years ago with a, and supports of something being done to this property, and I still support it, even though I no longer attends LP Brown. I'd like to see it through to the end, noting that government moves very slowly, and it's important to resolve this issue, and for the children to see it gets resolved maybe before they get through fifth, sixth grade. So I'm in full support and parking lots, green space, whatever, torn down. Thank you.
Caffeine in them. Thank you very much. I believe that that is everyone that has signed up. If there's anyone who did not have an opportunity to testify, please unmute yourself now. You appear to not have anyone doing so, Commissioner, so...
Perfect. Can we stop sharing the clock? Perfect. Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards?
I would only say that it is just as frustrating for us as Commissioners dealing with the process that leads up to this, I can assure you. And staff has been working on it. It's a tough thing to work through. So just glad to get here, and I know the, the community is frustrated, but our staff is frustrated as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Minzer?
Yeah, we're all, we're all hoping to handle the pocket gopher issue before we die. Yeah, I mean, I live very close to this neighborhood. Sounds like we've had 10 years of citizen concerns and complaints, seven years of process through existing county processes, and three years of effort by my office on this, and now we're, we're creating a new process in a sense that will hopefully, as one of the commenters said, set a template for how we can do this more efficiently in, in going forward. Because we don't have a ton of these situations, but, but when we do, we have a small handful, and when we do, it's really frustrating because people are just like, what's the problem? Why can't we, you know, it's obvious that this is a, a public health issue. So I'm, I'm hoping we can, we've, we're working toward an improvement of that. So I'm, I'm hoping we can, we've, we're working toward an improvement of that. A question, I get a couple of questions uh, for Craig or Josh. The, the agreement that we're being proposed with Olympia School District, does it have any elements of, in terms of the condition of what the school district will use the property for ultimately? Uh, that was brought up by a couple of folks. Like to clarify that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Joshua Cummings, the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. No, the ILA does not have conditions. Uh, the only condition that we do have is that whatever the school district proposes does need to meet our development land use codes and ordinances. If there's a conversation on what the school district, what the citizens would like the school district to do, they would be the best organization to receive those comments. Thurston County will receive the applications, but we are not at the stage yet to deciding what the property is going to be. That's on OSD potentially. So this, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say this first stage is A, the condemnation court filings and then B, the ILA is to start the environmental review. So we can't even get onto the property yet until we start the court filings and then get onto the property. Then we'll be able to see what the scope of the potential cleanup will be. And that's when OSD, the Olympia School District, will start to determine what is possible in terms of uh, tear down, redevelopment, but we're not at that stage yet.
I mean, just anecdotally, I, I think my understanding was that the school district was looking at parking, traffic flow, et cetera, as a, you know, I know they could, they might change gears, but that was my understanding of kind of what they were, what their main avenue of interest was in the property is that.
It sounds like they've had a lot of ideas and they'd be the best folks to answer that.
Fair enough.
Well, um, I guess my comments are, uh, I want to thank everyone who came in here today and provided public testimony. For those that offered your support as well as uh, your ideas on uh, the future of this. Uh, I want to take this moment and, and thank staff for all your hard work. I know it's been a very long process and you know, just really trying to make this as efficient in the future. I, I appreciate that. Because um, I know there are certainly things that come up and, and uh, we don't have a process for it and then it takes us down the rabbit hole of seven years plus. So um, thank you for, for looking into this and, and for, for making it more efficient and for the future. With that, um, there's no further discussion.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No ma'am.
I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Menzger.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia. Aye. Uh, next, is there a authorizing?
I move to authorize the prosecuting attorney's office to commence condemnation proceedings for the duplex and property located at 1904 and 1906 26th Avenue Northwest, Olympia, Washington 98502, adjacent to LP Brown Elementary School.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No ma'am.
I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Menzger.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia. Aye. Motion passes.
It's not over yet.
Thank you.
Talk to your school board possibly if you have issues.
Okay, we are adjourned and then we'll be going back to the Board of County Commissioners meeting.
So what is your pleasure? We could just move to the next public hearing and, and knock that out if you will, or we could go back to our regular agenda and then to the public hearing. And we still have, I believe, a department of, or
Transportation.
Transportation benefit. Yeah, district meeting.
Do we have to go to a different Zoom if we take on this next hearing?
We do have to go to a different Zoom, whichever one you would like. Yes. So.
Preference?
I'd just soon get this next one knocked out because I don't see anybody knocking down the doors.
I mean, it's the same issue. If, if someone happened to have been waiting, it's, we're, you know, we're an hour and thirteen minutes late. Let's get that one done.
Okay, let's go ahead and get it done.
All right. So we will now move to the public hearing on uh, the Development Code Docket Item Four or Seven A dash seven. All right. Are, yeah, are we live? Wait a minute.
Yeah, you're good to go. We're good to go? Okay. Good afternoon. Uh, this is a public hearing for Development Code Docket Item A seven, Low Impact Development, LID Code Amendment. It is Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. It is four fifteen P M. Uh, I'm Carolina Mahia. I'm the Chair of the Board. Uh, to my right is my Chair, Commissioner Menzger. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards, Assistant County Manager, uh, Robin Campbell, as well as Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis is joining, have joined us. Uh, and other staff members who will be presenting on this item. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on the proposed Development Code Docket Item A seven, Low Impact Development, LID Code Amendment. This is a high-grade public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person by Zoom, emailed and commented or mailed and commented. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the, the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel uh, to help us manage attendance. Andrew Bond, as Associate Planner, will provide information on this topic. Assuming those on Zoom uh, wish to testify, we will read your name aloud. Uh, we will read names on the sign up sheet and you will have four minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you're called on, please state your name and address for the record. Did it softer.
Thank you.
Uh, the public hearing is now open. Andrew will now present background information of the proposed amendment, written comments submitted, and any additional information requested by the Board. Andrew?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrew Bond here with Community Planning. Development Code Docket Item A seven, the Low Impact Development Code Update, is a county-initiated amendment. The proposed amendments affect the Thurston County Zoning Ordinance Title Twenty and the Olympia Urban Growth Area Zoning Ordinance Title Twenty-three and address existing limitations within the LID code adopted in twenty sixteen. This is a priority project on the docket as identified by the Board of County Commissioners. This request only applies to rural Thurston County and the Olympia Urban Growth Area. The Thurston County Community Planning held two work sessions with the Planning Commission on October sixth and November third of twenty twenty-one. A public hearing with the Planning Commission was held on December third, twenty twenty-one. And at that meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed amendments. A SEPA Determination of Nonsignificance was issued on the proposal on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one with no public comment and/or appeal. The Board was briefed on February third and requested additional background from staff. Staff returned on March third with fallout materials during agenda setting. At the agenda setting meeting on March first, the Board directed staff to bring forward an AIS to request a public hearing based on the Planning Commission's recommendation. The Washington State Department of Commerce was notified of the proposed amendments on November fifth, twenty twenty-one. And at this time, no public comments have been received on this project. Staff and, staff notified the public uh, of the hearing through a press release, a legal ad in the Olympian, email to interested parties, and consistently updated the LID webpage to ensure the most accurate and timely information was available to the public. Following the public hearing today, the Board will have the option to adopt the ordinance. Thank you for the opportunity to present on this proposal and I'm available for any questions.
If possible, I'd like to add a little bit to the presentation. Chair?
Um, yes, go ahead.
Joshua Cummings, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, CPED. This is, as Andrew stated, a county-initiated update. And uh, one of the opportunities for success in adding flexibility and clarity to our code while maintaining protection of the environment that is written in our code. So it does not change the code, but it does provide flexibility and clarity as our planners are trying to work through the permitting process for our applicants. Just wanted to add that piece because it is important to recognize that we are honoring the Board's direction in serving the citizens of Thurston County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, no questions, but this didn't happen overnight here. So I'll just mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments? Commissioner Menzger?
No questions, no.
Okay. With that, we move to public testimony. Okay, there's no one in the boardroom and there's.
No one on Zoom that we see.
Okay. Okay. With that, well, any discussion on this?
No, other than hopefully this will make it a little easier for individuals to have options to uh, complete their particular project while protecting the environment.
Yeah, I'll just say I'm, I'm a big advocate for low impact development in general. So I looked at this really carefully, staff. There's a lot of detail kind of to this and technical pieces and staff really went through it with me into the weeds. Where I felt comfortable that this doesn't weaken what we're doing, it just makes it work better. And that's what we want to do is make these um, these protections work better for citizens and not be unnecessarily inflexible. So I think we are making some good changes and I think the fact that no one's in here to complain is probably a good indication of that because um, this is an issue that, you know, if we got it wrong, we'd be hearing about it, so.
Yes, I would like to echo what uh, both my seatmates have said, you know, and thank you to staff for working on this and it's one more item on the docket I list, so I'm excited about that. Okay.
I need to move to, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No ma'am.
I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Menzger.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia. Aye. And then do you want to move forward?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
I move to approve Development Code Docket Item A seven, Low Impact Development, which amends the Thurston County Code Chapters twenty oh three, twenty oh seven, twenty thirty, twenty thirty A, and twenty three oh four related to low impact development regulations.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Any discussion?
No ma'am.
I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Menzger.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahia. Aye. Okay, thank you. That we are adjourned and we will be going back to the Board of County Commissioners meeting to finish that off. Yes.
We take five minutes to use the restroom?
Yeah.
All right. Reconvene new four thirty. All right.
All right.